Could you please let us know now? Anybody's got a question? No, okay, that's good. Just to note, the town council doesn't record all live stream meetings currently, but we do fully support the principle of openness and transparency. And we don't have any problem with the filming that's going on or any of the reporting before the full council meetings. We're not expecting a fire alarm. So if the fire alarm goes off, then there's a fire somewhere, so need to leave as quick as you can. Fire exit there and over there. And also, if anybody needs it at any point during the meeting, the toilet's just out there and to the right. So, part one business, item number one, apologies for absence. Yeah, we've seen apologies from councillors Pollan, Shepherd, Burgham and Woodhaw. Item number two is minutes of meetings. Firstly, the committee minutes. To note the minutes of the planning committees on the 5th of February, 4th of March and the 11th of March. Secondly, the finance committee meeting on the 18th of March. And thirdly, the communities meeting on the 26th of February. Is everybody happy with those minutes? Anybody got any amendments or comments?
Yeah, just two more.
And I'd also like to propose the approval of the minutes of the meeting of full council held on the 20th of October. Are members happy for me to sign those as a record of the meeting? Okay, item number three, declarations of interest. Have we received any?
Um, we've seen that bounce, okay.
Anybody got any declarations of interest for tonight's meeting? No, okay, if anything comes to mind during the meeting, then just put your hand up. Okay, so item four is public participation. I understand that we've got a request from the Republic to speak.
Yeah, Mr. Ullerton.
Mr. Ullerton, would you like to stand up and talk to us or sit down and talk to us?
Yeah, no, I'm all unhappy. I look quicker than I thought.
You're taken other ways.
It's regarding the motion regarding town centre.
Yeah, that's going to be a bit later over the meeting.
Well, that's what I want to talk about.
Okay, yeah.
Is that all right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
You can speak before we pass this question. Oh, right. Yeah, so you can speak now.
Prepared statement, and I have time to three minutes. Exactly. No, thank you for letting me speak. Obviously, I'm speaking on the motion regarding town centre plan. Let's introduce myself. I'm Richard Ullerton. I've been involved with lots of organisations in the town over the time I've lived here, which is maybe fifty years. And so really, I've never been as worried about the town centre and about the town in general as I am today. When I cast my mind back to the seventies and eighties, when we had when we had the auction night in town, the town was buzzing. They brought all the farmers in and their wives in, and it was unbelievable. I always thought when I came in the mid-seventies, I couldn't believe the number of people. But once that auction moved out, and I think this is the defining thing in the town, we lost our USP and with our identity. And we've been struggling to find that identity ever since then. And we've talked a lot about it, but we haven't found it. And we talk endlessly about Penrith and the wonderful position it has, transport links, opposition vote away, short drives to the North Lakes, beautiful countryside all around us. But we still don't have a plan. And we have seen plans come and go and go. The last one being back in 2018. And for one reason or another, it failed. But I would say that at least we had a plan. There's a plan to take us to 2050. And yes, it failed. But we need a plan. And as we know, we've had a lot of change over the last ten or fifteen years, which haven't only affected Penrith, but towns throughout the UK. Even before the social and economic impact of Covid, Penrith and Ty Street had, I never say this word, irreplicably changed. It is increasingly clear that it is no benefit in clinging to a sentimental vision of the past because the past is gone. We must now plan for a new bold vision of a Penrith that acknowledges our rich heritage, restores our cultural identity and preserves our uniqueness and character. The alternative can only be described as a spiral of decline, degeneration and decay. I believe that this town council, with the support of the local community, and can I say, the business community in particular, should seize this opportunity to commercially reinvigorate the beating heart of Penrith by creating a visible, like, plan focused on transforming the town centre into a complete community hub, incorporating health, housing, arts, education, entertainment, leisure, business and office space, as well as retail. And all this must be carefully packaged within a unique subject proposition, USP, which we were referred to before. It may sound paradoxical, but it's true to say, and you've heard this saying, if we fail to plan, we plan to fail. And we will fail. So let's keep that in the back of our minds. In my view, such a plan doesn't need to be difficult or overcomplicated. In fact, we already have something which should be used as a template. This was produced in 2007, somewhere as you remember it. Ronnie, you'll remember that, the Penrith Partnership. It contains all the elements which need to be considered to reinvigorate our town. We don't need to use expensive consultants again to tell us what we already know. We have the skills and the know-how within this room and beyond to bring this town up to date. So I would suggest, if you want to see, if we haven't got it, look at it because there's lots of elements in it. Ronnie was involved with it years and years ago. It was a brilliant plan, but it never came to fruition. It sat on the shelf, left in dust. And we don't want that to happen again, whatever plan we come up with. So I'd like to support the motion. I know some will discuss later on. I'd like to support it. Sorry, I've taken you, taken maybe a bit more than three minutes today. Thank you for your time, anyway.
Thank you, excellent. Okay. Do we have any councillors who wants to make any representations? councillor Bell?
Thank you. Richard, I absolutely agree with everything, more or less everything that you've said, not quite everything you've said. And the new council plans to succeed. We've got a great opportunity with the new council and we need to grasp it. As you may know from your officers and from your representative, the conversation about the regeneration of the town centre actually began last week with the meeting of the town team. And for those that might not be sure about what the town team is, it brings together a wide range of stakeholders and previously has been involved in parking movement, cycling, walking and the borderlands work. And the whole idea of the town team is to work cooperatively and in partnership to address key concerns in the town and to deliver activities. And it's been around now for quite a long time. To be clear, the town team can only take decisions to cooperate and work together. And we've done some good stuff in the last few years. At the end of the day, whoever owns the issue the town team are talking about retains the legal responsibility and the final decision-making. So, for example, if the town council decided to run an event, other organisations might put their hand up, say, yes, we can help. But the responsibility would lie with the town council because it's a town council event. The town team might have a big input into parking solutions, but the responsibility rests with Westmoreland Furnace. The legal responsibility for planning rests with Westmoreland Furnace. At the town team meeting, it was agreed to set up a subgroup of the town team to concentrate, to focus on the regeneration of the town centre. The subgroup would include those stakeholders with the time and skills to do the work, and it will report back regularly to the town team. In the light of your motion later, I really hope the town council continues to be a member of the town team and with a view to working with that subgroup because your contribution is absolutely essential and it's going to be extremely valuable. The town centre regeneration work, sorry, the town centre regeneration work is already under work in Barrow and in Kendal, and it's right and proper that it happens in Penrith as well. This work will address the current challenges, agree a vision for the town centre of the future and take advantage of any relevant opportunities that arise along the way. Why isn't the brief of the subgroup wider, I hear you say? And that's what your motion is about. Well, Westmoreland Furnace is the strategic planning authority and it is obliged to create a new planning development plan. And the council hopes that in the autumn, it will be in the first tranche of councils, UK-wide or England-wide, to go through that process. And when it starts, it's expected to take about eighteen months. But until then, the council is bound by the planning development plans and policies inherited from previous councils, fit for the past but not fit for the future. I think all of us would agree that there does need to be that wider strategic plan, wider than the town centre. But for the reasons I've just set out, now is not the time to have that wide agenda. If we were to have a wider agenda, to focus on the town centre and all the opportunities that Kendal and Barrow enjoy through that, will be lost. I promise you that work and opportunity for conversations on that wider strategic conversation will start later in the year, building some of the good ideas from many of the plans in the past, and you mentioned one in particular. Because there was some good work in the past and we can't afford for that to be lost. I know that councillor Nags is passionate about his town and the wider area. But, you know, partnership working is about not only walking the walk but talking the talk. It means time for conversations outside meetings between partners and to make sure that all of us speak from an informed position. To my knowledge, council and I did not ask for a greeting from Westmoreland Furnace officers about the existing plans for the strategic Penrith plan. And certainly, unfortunately, didn't pick up the phone for a conversation about his concerns. That's not partnership working. When you debate your motion, I hope you will commit to being a partner on the town centre regeneration work which has started and join the wider strategic discussions in the future. Penrith will be better for us working very closely together. Thank you.
Okay, item five is just to determine whether matter eighteen, the staffing report, can be considered throughout the presence of the public. I've said this before, I always check very carefully to see why we're excluding something from the public because I don't like to do it unless we really have to. But there are some items in there that are sensitive, which is why we're going to do it. So can I just show hands if everyone's happy to do that? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our motion on notice, item six, a regeneration plan for Penrith. To consider the motion on notice of councillor Nags. And I'm inviting councillor Nags now to present the motion immediately.
Thanks. I had to rethink what I was going to say because of the two different inputs that I wasn't expecting tonight, so maybe a bit destroying it. But I'm going to start by saying the conversation on regeneration didn't start last week. I was involved in a conversation about regeneration going back to 2011. In the autumn of 2011, I was working with a group called the Penrith Futures Partnership, which was seventeen people who have a big stake in business, in commonwealth, in all aspects of Penrith, to try and influence what was happening at the time because we felt it was a misinformed discussion. There wasn't enough information. People were basing decisions on prejudices. There was no strategic thinking. We'd lost the 2017, seventeen and that master plan and that plan that Richard Ullerton referred to there, and it hasn't been replaced. So we felt there was a void being left by it. It needed replacing. So we did our best to try and influence people. We didn't try to write the plan. I'm saying we, now the Penrith Futures Partnership I'm speaking for. What we tried to do was to give good quality information to feed into the discussion. And we published, I think in 2021, the first paper that had that discussion. And everything in that paper is valid today and nothing in that paper has been advanced since 2011. I will say that in addition to that, as councillor Bell was speaking, I was thinking of two things that have happened recently that have been significant to this town council. Firstly, the failure to deliver on the school in Carlton, which we were all expecting, but now a different strategy is being developed. We as a town council disagreed with that strategy. We disagreed with Westmoreland Furnace. Secondly, there was the levelling up bid. We and several other significant bodies in the town objected to the way that the levelling up bid had gone, thought it was a folly. And hopefully that will be emphasised. But we do disagree with Westmoreland Furnace from town to town. We've got a right to agree with them. The way we agree with them, we hope, is as a critical friend, not as a combatant. We're critical friends. We put our perspectives in, which that's why we got elected here as councillors. So going back to the town team, the town team have done a job. I don't think it was, I was involved in part of that work on the place plan. I didn't think it was sufficiently strategic. I didn't think that anything was being joined up. I and several others on the town team said that. And whatever comes out of it, I think will not have the added value of being developed in a strategic way or joined up. We've got examples of that. I also tried to develop an arts and culture strategy. I think probably three and a half years ago, we've got consultants taken on by the town council. The Westmoreland Furnace, sorry, the Eden District Council did exactly the same. Even though they knew we'd already started that work, they went off and did their own thing. So this motion is a bid to have a little bit more jointed working. And we don't want to be a pretty good friend. We want to be an ally to the Westmoreland Furnace council. We want to work with them. That's the whole purpose of the of the motion. But, I'm sorry, stop me if you need to because I'm going back to my original script now. The issue is, is the town is hollowing out. We are losing things. We're losing the banks now, as well as already having lost the main post office and several shops. We're not going to replace retail with retail. The shops that are coming in are either a bit quirky or experiential retail or services. That's how it should go. But we're not, we're not planning for that. We're just letting that happen around us. In terms of the infrastructure of the town, in terms of education and health, we're at a bursting point already on the infrastructure and probably other things as well. We don't think that we adequately planning for that infrastructure development to go with the massive expansion of this town. I was looking at, in 1911, we had nine thousand residents. In 1974, we had eleven thousand. We now have, well, in 2021, that was the biggest expansion of the town there's ever been, and it continues at the moment. In 2021, we had about fifteen, sixteen thousand residents. But since then, we've had all those out on the edge of town and estates being developed, hundreds of houses. So I haven't been able to get a figure on the current size of our population, but it's obviously going to be much bigger than the 2021 census figure. But we're not keeping up. So we lost the plan in 2017. I mean, it was environmental vandalism that did it for it, wasn't it? It was about the beacon, and that's what cost the council. Other things in the plan were probably great. But we've never filled that void. We've never got it back. And when I look at the plan from, I think it was 2004, 2017, they're saying exactly the same things as we're saying now. The same things appear in that plan. I've got a list. I won't go through them because I've already taken up too much time. But the same things. There's even a suggestion, I was in an informal town council meeting last week, where we were discussing a development, a little development that we thought that is in the two, the development we were talking about, I was amazed to find, was in the 2004 plan. It never happened. Much of the 2004 plan never happened and the 2017 plan was never replaced. So in some way, this is about working together. It is about working together. We don't feel as though we have been included as partners. We feel as the councillors of Penrith that our voice is often overridden. And it's a bid to, let's have a strategic regeneration plan. Let's see where we're going, rather than just take any funding stream that's going and develop different projects that don't make any sense at all. So it's a bid to work together.
Can I just ask you to read out what we're resolving to do at the end?
The motion, yeah. Sorry, it's commit to working with Westmoreland Furnace council, partners and stakeholders, support the development of a comprehensive and strategic plan for Penrith and its town centre, focusing on the critical issues of growth of the town, infrastructure development, town centre regeneration. To write to the Westmoreland Furnace council requesting that they follow up on their statement on the 29th of January, 24, by organising an initial meeting to agree an approach to development, a transformative regeneration plan for Penrith as a major town in the new authority area. To ensure that the plan is developed by drawing on previous extensive consultations involving residents and stakeholders by undertaking any additional public consultations that may be necessary to secure alignment with their priorities and aspirations. And to seek to harmonise efforts with the Westmoreland Furnace council to achieve shared outcomes and to maximise the benefits for Penrith residents and visitors by recognising the importance of a strategic regeneration planning and cohesive vision in guiding Penrith's development with a unified approach that fosters sustainable development. And that helps me emphasise the point that I think the emphasis was about working together as a partner rather than a critical friend.
So that's the proposal. Do we have somebody to second it? Councillor Jackson, thank you. So any questions or comments, please try and keep them as brief as you can. We'll stick to just one per person rather than the back and forth.
Yeah, I would like to propose an amendment, actually, which is to harden the thing up so we actually get a scheduled set of liaison meetings with the Westmoreland Furnace council. So I don't want it once a month, whatever. To to firm up a series of liaison sessions with WFC and Penrith Town Council to discuss this. So if we're going to, I'm throwing something out there maybe once a month or something.
In addition to the
In addition to the
In addition to the resolution.
Exactly, yeah.
So the original motion, the move of the original motion, if he agrees with that, it can be included within the motion. If not, it means secondary.
Do you have to add that at the bottom?
I'm happy if I can make a comment to explain. I'm happy that. I think that's what makes a great happen. I think it does. One of the things I wanted to say was I don't think it needs to be the town team. The town team, the town team have done the best of what they've done. But I think that we need a fresh approach within a fresh format. And these need to be separate makers with a whole new way of looking at it. Because if we don't, we'll get the same old, same old. I'm happy to accept the amendment.
So where does that leave us now?
So that leaves me now with the motion, which is the form paper plus the addition to firm a certificate to the eight on sessions between Westmoreland Furnace council and Penrith Town Council.
Right, anybody else wants to talk? Councillor Holden?
Thank you. Thank you councillor Nags. And thank you councillor Bell. It's nice to second you. It's always been good.
Sorry, seconded for the amendment.
Well, no, it's second, it's not an amendment because it was included in the original motion. Councillor Nags agreed as the move of the original motion, but that could be included in it. So
I need to agree as well.
Yes.
Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All motion. Right, so basically, I agree that we need to be working with Westmoreland Furnace council. And the voice in my mind is, who is the town team? I mean, it's the first time I've really heard about the town teams. And for my stakeholders, who are they? Are there any town councillors on the town team? And who are they? And do they come back to council? What's discussed at those meetings? Are there any meetings in notes? Do we get anything? If we're going to go ahead and create this frequent liaison with whoever, then it might be prudent to ask all members of the town council if they're ever able to attend to attend. I know we're talking about the centre of Penrith. And you might think there's the town councillors who actually got town centres in their ward. But I do think everybody living in Penrith will have some input into what's going on in the town centre. So I think it ought to be broader than just a small group of people. And especially, they need to report back to the rest of us. Even if it's just an email sent, meeting last night, we've got to discuss any feedback. That would be useful. Just to me, there's not enough communication about what's going on in these other little meetings to get a good regeneration programme together and have to, it's in another part of the agenda. But the climate change people, they've come up with really good wages through to help promote the climate change and the problems with it. And that, I think, is what the regeneration team should be looking at as well. These are the steps we take to achieve what we want. And I don't feel we get that removed. Sorry, I think I should talk to you.
So the town team are officers and members from, it was what, it was Penrith Town Council, the Eden District Council, Penrith Town Town Council, the Chamber of Trade, the two bids. And they, they met regularly to look at moving forward, the borderlands stuff. There's also a subgroup on marketing, et cetera. You have agreed at the annual town council meeting, you're member representatives on that group. And when there is things to report back, you get a report back to council to tell you what's happening. So you've had updates on borderlands and branding that have come through.
So I do interrupt, but are borderlands and the town team the same thing?
It's a subgroup of the town team, yeah. The town team is just the overall
I hadn't realised that.
And Borderlands is a group of the town team, as is the marketing group. So you do get feedback on those groups when there's things to report. But we tend to do things like the Borderlands feedback. We do that as a joint reporting back so that the authorities and everybody's putting out the same information to their people at the same time. So you're all hearing the same information, but you appoint those people to those groups.
And it's a legal number?
Yes, three, three members from the town council, three members from us on Furnace.
Can you remind me who they are?
Yeah, councillor Jackson, councillor Jason and councillor Kennedy.
Councillor Kennedy?
I didn't realise I had a little town team. I'm on the Borderlands team. And I didn't really, yeah.
Borderlands are part of the town.
I just have no idea what's going on. And that's that's I'm. So I've been, maybe I should have known about it. Didn't, but yeah. So anyways, yes, so it's such a huge issue. Like, we talk about this, Eric Wolf, years ago, I talked at a meeting with Eric, that's a long time ago, what is Penrith? Is it a market town? Is it a tourist town? All this stuff was in there. And this is part of the question. And it's a bigger thing than, yeah, so it's, it's issues like that. And then once you know what we are, which is difficult. We're one of those things. We're a hub, a cycle hub, a train hub, an international hub, you know. So it's stuff like that. And I suppose it's, it's what team would be for. Certainly, it isn't, wouldn't have thought of it just a town council under the Chamber of Trade bid to be involved. Is it just the centre of the town or is it outside the industry and the units? As I was going to say, I'll come into it as well. Talking of, you've mentioned about schooling, doctors, all that sort of thing. So that's part of it. In effect, trying to get a plan, once you've got it, then you can plan the future of the town over the next fifty years, whatever, forty years or whatever. So it's, yeah, and I think this is, obviously, I think very much important, working with all together, how we do it. I'm not sure, but I think it is a big, big sort of issue. And the branding, what to brand ourselves as. I was mentioning that there's going to be a national park office in the town. Well, are we part of the national park? Would they want to say what we are? We're a Penrith town. It's next to motorways in the Eden Valley. So it's all these issues, all these questions, which I think are part of that question. And at the end of it, I'm not quite sure what we are at the end of it, but that's what we're looking at.
Councillor Jackson, you had your hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is one of those ones where we, pussy put around each other, trying to be diplomatic and say, we want to be partners and we all want the best for Penrith. And then millions and millions of pounds come our way and there's no overarching idea. There's been several attempts at overarching ideas. Some of them have gone down in such flames that there's now a terrified fear of vision and of grand ideas of doing something big and out of the box. And I've been in devolution meetings between Eden and Penrith, and I've been in town team meetings between Westmoreland Furnace and Penrith Town Council. And I've seen a lot of the projects that are put forward and they seem, I'm sorry, here's your headline, like rearranging deck chairs. I don't want to be the soundbite person, but it's what I feel. Because I've seen them go up, and forgive me for putting a name on a building, empty for so long. I've seen the way car parks are empty at one point, and then when they happen to be free on a certain day, they're absolutely rammed full. And I don't see the people who should be understanding these issues coming and looking at them and saying, well, actually, maybe there's a workers' parking problem. Nothing changes and the car parks don't change and prices are going up now and they still don't reflect what's necessary for the people in the town. Everything seems so piecemeal. And when we suggest things, and forgive me here, but in councillor Bell's submission to us, it seemed plain as day when she said there were things at the town council and there were things at the Westmoreland Furnace Council. And if there's a town council event, it would be our responsibility. And if there's a Westmoreland Furnace thing, it would be their responsibility. And if you read between the lines, that's very clearly, there are things that we do that are our turf, stay away. And you're not allowed an opinion. And if you do have an opinion, you can come to us outside meetings, behind closed doors, and we'll give you a briefing. Now, I've been at these meetings and heard at time and again that this is going to be Westmoreland Furnace's idea. And we can't do this because, oh, someone owns that or someone else owns that. And we can also use things like compulsory purchase. If we have the will in this town to make a change, we can. But there isn't because, again, we put our foot around things and we've got to be diplomatic. This is owned by there and that's owned by that, and this is your responsibility and this is yours. And it's genuinely depressing. Because I hear people in inverted commas, putting the town down. And it's, it's a natural response because they see that they can't get into dentists or they see empty shops. And really, I mean, if you took a proper look at the town, you'd say, well, actually, there's always new shops coming in. And there's a, there's a healthy, vibrant retail offering. It's very spread out. Maybe things like New Squares don't help because it's also spread out. You've got John Norris at one end and the coffee shop at the other, and they're far too far apart. But again, there's no strategic vision for trying to work out what Penrith should look like in terms of retail. We have empty shops and we have empty upstairs of shops, which could be flats, it could be all sorts. And the fact that we've talked about this for years and years and still nothing changes, and now we're waiting till October. I am willing to take on faith that in October, something will come from Westmoreland Furnace and it will be brilliant. But by taking that on faith, I'm going against the evidence that my eyes and ears have seen and what I've seen in meetings. And I'd have to go against my better judgement because I know the, the, and I hate to say it because officers don't have a right of reply, but there are certain decision makers that have been around for a while and I'm talking about officers and councillors, and we're all guilty here. Because sometimes we just say, okay, that's a good idea for now, but it doesn't feed into anything and we don't get any grander idea. And we just pootle along thinking, oh, that would be good for that little bit of money. But then it's not used against match funding, it's not thought of as part of a bigger picture, and I'm tired. So what I see as this motion doing is saying, we are a representative body of the people. We listen to the people an awful lot and we would like a little bit more input, please. Sorry.
Councillor Snell, follow that if you can.
All I can say really is, I agree. However, what I'm really concerned about is that we move forward. We don't stay still. We don't look back on the plans and think, oh, yes, they're fine. We've got lots of ideas in this town. We've got lots of people who maybe are not on the time team, the town team. Have to get that out of my head. And like you said, we shouldn't be chasing funding. We need a plan that when the funding comes along, we say, hang on, we've got this idea, it fits perfectly. When I think about the hub that was put forward for the levelling up money that was two miles outside of town, initially started as businesses and shops. Who, who actually consulted with who on that? And I know it's gone, but we weren't listened to at the time. And Dave mentioned the fact that we weren't listened to at the time. And I think we didn't get the level up, levelling up funding, which was a good job because if we did for that, it would not, it certainly didn't tick the boxes for levelling up. And it certainly didn't fix the boxes for the green agenda either. And that's why we need to be moving forward. There's lots of expertise. We've got seventeen councillors in this town. We have loads of expertise in different ways and we talk to residents. We know, and I know that the Westmoreland Furnace councillors do as well. However, there's only four of them, there's seventeen of us, that can represent the funds, or, uh, funds, represent the residents with ideas. And I, I wholeheartedly support this and I'm committed to working my little socks off to make sure that we get a really good plan. If I can be involved.
Councillor Jackson?
I just want to say I agree with all my councillor colleagues here. I think just all the different all the different ideas that have been proposed means that we really do have to work together with the Westmoreland Furnace Council. And do it to the betterment of Penrith and its residents. And I do think that we all need to be on the town team. Now, I happen to be on the borderlands team and I didn't realise it was the town team and I went to the meeting last week as well. And there's some very interesting ideas coming up, but we, you all need to know about it. Okay. And, and I think there should be representatives from each of the different areas in Penrith. So we've got Penrith West, East, North, South, Carlton. And I think there should be a representative for each of those areas sitting on the town team.
Anyone else? I think that's everyone. I think everyone's had a word, so.
I can put in a little bit if you want. Again, yeah, I will do, I'll put in a little bit. I mean, this is, this is a, this is a good, good motion that follows on from the one that I put forward at the last meeting. So it's, it's a good progression on that. It's, it's specific, you know, mentioning that town centre regeneration in a motion, which is kind of what I was getting at as well. So, yes.
Okay, everyone's had something to say. It ticks my boxes, working together and the much-used mantra of getting stuff done. Which is what I've been trying to do for most of the, most of the year. Councillor Nags, I think you have a right to sum up before we go.
I'm just thanking everybody there. But so we've caught a few things I didn't catch and made the points extremely well. I mean, I think, I just want to emphasise that, you know, being on the town council more or less for, I don't know, five or six years now. And I've been very impressed with the talent that's available to the town council here, but I do think it's underused and undervalued. I don't know who undervalues it because we're not given a chance to show the value of it. And that we need to be let off the leash a bit. And we are, as I think Hillary said, we're seven members, we're Penrith residents. We've got, we're, there are only four Westmoreland Furnace councils. We could be a huge resource, but we're, we're, we're held back. I've got to emphasise, I think that so far, and we can blame the Eden District Council or the County Council, we can't quite yet blame the Westmoreland Furnace, but there's insufficient strategy. I think the whole emphasis of what we're saying is if anybody can point to a strategy in this town, please point it out to us. There is no strategy for the change in a time when the town is undergoing its biggest change in a lifetime. One way we were held back was, we, I just, somebody said to me, I triggered a memory of, I think they were called Think in Place, that were brought in to develop the the borderlands stuff, the place plan. And quite frankly, I was appalled at what they did. They came in with a blueprint from a hundred miles down the road. They stuffed their bags full of money and went back down a hundred miles down the road, leaving that resource, leaving Cumbria. When, when I was an officer, we would have done that in a couple of days what they did, that they took weeks to do. They consulted, they had about a hundred and twenty people in a population of sixteen, seventeen, eighteen thousand, they had about a hundred and twenty eight responses. At the two workshops, they had eleven councillors and I think fourteen members of the public. And that was it. And they developed a plan for us. They had developed a plan. There are seventeen of us here who know Penrith intimately. They came from down the road. Check it out on the web. They used the blueprint that they've used in several other towns and cities and then told us what we needed in Penrith. An appalling waste of money when the skill, the expertise, the knowledge is in this room. And I would actually like to see Penrith Town Council be given the lead on developing a strategic regeneration plan by, and Westmoreland Furnace agree with that and assist us with it. I don't want to work in partnership with them, I don't want to work against them. And the other, the final thing I want to say was on the borderlands project that I was, I heard several times comments from the bid, from the chamber, from our officers, from other councillors, that there was an insufficient coherence of a strategy in development that, now, that's the thing that's about to become a line now here. But I'm sure the projects won't be connected and it was said so many times. I think people got very frustrated. So all I'm appealing for is a strategy.
So we have the motion with now five parts to it. I'm going to suggest that we just vote on the whole lot on the map if everyone's happy with that. So it's been proposed, it's been seconded. So are all those in favour? Okay, item seven is my report. Here I'm going to have to apologise because I've had a lot going on. So I don't have an awful lot to report. I have been working on a few things in the background, but it's been quite a quiet time for me. Any reports from members? Councillor Kenny will start. Have you got anything to report?
Not really, I believe it's not going on, but it is not, but that's better than here.
Councillor Nags?
I attended the Scores Residents' Meeting, as usual, and I also attended as a councillor the launch of the Penrith Lottery, where they were attracting good causes that they will identify, that people who buy lottery tickets will identify these good causes that they want to give money to. And it was there to launch the good causes. And it was a good presentation from both Penrith Lottery and the organisation that are working with them now, Gatherwell.
Councillor Jackson?
I am working with parents, some parents at North Lakes School because the interim solution for the school bus service is proving too expensive for the P G A and the school to fund. We provided some funding, I think we were just about the only ones, and it's costing sixty per day. And as you can imagine, at the course of a school year, and you just can't afford it. And I'm hoping Westmoreland Furnace's bus funding can be used to ensure not just North Lakes children, but all children can get to school from wherever they live in the town without walking across dangerous roads or recourse to a car. So again, there's going to be a petition starting up again and it's just to raise awareness of sort of, I don't know, we can get here, that it, people who value school transport and buses in this town can shout about it, respond to Westmoreland Furnace's buses. Consultation because it's rightly important what we do, do that in the town for all students because it ticks all sorts of boxes, buses, not just getting used to school, but reducing congestion, pollution, climate change targets, connectivity. So very important. So mainly thanks to the parents who have done absolutely ninety nine, nine point nine percent of the work.
Councillor Jackson?
I can report that the council town, I heard this this afternoon, the council town community action group has been disbanded. Which is a shame, but it's been disbanded as of today. So I'm also, I'm going to be liaising with Laura McLennan from the traffic management team regarding a disabled group from Leesdale House up to the box. So we're going to go and have a walkabout next week. And I've been liaising with a resident on Norfolk Road who's really upset about the speeding. Thank you to councillor Bell for helping me with this. She's, she's had her car damaged several times because of speeding in Norfolk Road. So I've been liaising with the officers here and the residents, we have put in contact with the local police officer. And we're hoping, well, actually Norfolk Road is part of the twenty mile now. We're hoping that Westmoreland Furnace will look at that. That's it.
Councillor Snell?
The other thing I've already got to report is I attended the Cumbria Association of Local Councils. I mean, it's a farm engagement trading, which is quite interesting, especially as we're talking about overall strategy and trying to engage with many people about our sports. So I think that's a good timing.
Councillor Holden?
Yeah, I should do things. Carlton Meadows, Morbury Heights. On their Facebook page, there's the information about residents that have been emailed by person and phones on three alternative designs for another play area on the person estate on the road. So I think it's good that person are actually, you know, involved in their residents on that estate now about the designs of their play areas and hopefully they all prove a good, a good design in the end. There's, there's roadworks on Carlton Hill Road. I'm also in touch with Laura. Carlton Hill Road, machine labour servicing between the eighteenth of March and the fifteenth of April. And that's from the A six eight six to Ash Road Junction. They're liaising with the vets, I believe. And later, in the new financial year, because we're meeting this year, they will look at permanent patching repairs on the road north east of Carlton Meadows up to Beetham Edge Junction, which is a huge, a huge engine road there. Along that same line, there's footwork paths, footpath work, sorry, going on from Beetham Edge just beyond the round Thorng Road. It's like, it's like a mudslide down to the hill. And there is proposals for work and I, I think they started, but there were a few steps in there at the top. I'm sure there's all going to be steps and how to go to manage it, but, you know, enjoying some of that. So that will be big and huge improvements in short cuts. I think that would be good. Carlton Park, the chair of Carlton Park put in a bid to Westmoreland Furnace for a coronation tree to be planted on Carlton Park. I agree with that for support. As has councillor Jimmy Taylor from Westmoreland Furnace and councillor Mackhouse, it's their patch as well. So they've got actual supporting for the coronation tree. And the bus route consultation, I think you touched on this, Sunday, that's from the twenty fifth of March to search of the baseball, information from the local library. I have actually printed out some information about that as a card point. So I don't think everybody's aware of this after, but that's going to happen. It's happening now. And someone mentioned they were planning a meeting about the tree running over the road that had been coming down.
It was me, yeah.
It was you, yes, councillor Lawson. I've found out from the caller, Jordan, at Westmoreland Furnace, she's what I call the tree lady. She's what I call the tree lady. Um, the trees were later be cut down by the adjacent landowner because they wanted to repair the wall. And the felling has been reported now to the forestry commission, who are investigating the matter. And as part of that investigation, they will number and count the stubs and measure the diameters to ascertain the volume of timber that has been held. So the volume of timber in meters cubed, go on, I want to go off on one here, could you? Is assessed to see if the breach of the forestry act nineteen sixty seven has, has occurred. So I just thought, you can see all the numbers on the stones lightly, and you doubly think, what's going on there? So maybe that sheds a bit of light. And also to know that the forestry commission have got an act of which they can act. If there's any cut back that maybe the bus first, I don't know. Okay, um, that's it. Yes, that's my lot, sorry.
This might, this might not be a question for you, it might be a question for councillor Bell, I don't know. But the, the road from, um, from Carlton that goes up to Beacon Edge.
Yeah.
The last time I asked about potholes on there, I was told that it was classified, I think it was sub C level. And, and, you know, like you've got an A road, B road, C, it's like below that, it's like, yeah. It's like the lowest classification of road and, and it was never intended to have the levels of traffic on it, but, but it now does. Is, is it possible to get roads reclassified?
Um, nothing is impossible if you are in this age.
I'm just, I'm just thinking with the way that things are growing over there, it might be an idea to re-assess it.
That section of road is absolutely terrible.
And they, and they couldn't prioritise it because it was.
If you'd like to send me an email, um, I'll pursue that for you.
Okay, okay. Councillor Jason?
Yeah, I visited Amiga, I don't know how many times since the last time I reported this, but, uh, and have made a number of suggestions to, to hopefully assist in, uh, odour reduction.
Councillor Snell?
I'm not sure if I can raise it here. Um. I'm, I'm involved with the refugee who has had to move because of the hate crime. So I think that's enough said, really.
Okay. So item nine is the resolutions report. I'll just ignore it. Uh, outstanding on the resolutions report are in, uh, progress. So that the centre Andrew's role of our opening, that is addressed to, uh, faculty application for diocese upstairs. Um, plant account signatories are progressing, albeit slowly. Quotations for redesigns, interpretation, refining scheme are ongoing. Um, putting the ears on obviously with highways, even though, uh, Wairi agreement to Thackerbeck Field. So now the development sector has been improved by highways. We've only need the next couple of weeks on that. And the outstanding biodiversity policy needs to be included in the climate strategy work. So that's just to note.
Everyone happy to snowgo? Yeah, okay. Uh, item ten is the climate strategy. Um, just to ask members to consider the recommendation of the climate strategy task and finish group to approve, uh, the refreshed climate strategy and first year action plan. Um, we've worked very hard on it. Um, there's been lots of activity, lots of different streams. Uh, a lot of hard work gone in, especially councillor Nags has put a lot of, hard work into the, uh, into the kind of final polishing of the document. Um. The, uh, the whole lot is there for you to look at in the notes in the agenda pack. Um, so I'd like to propose, uh, that the strategy and the action plan may be approved. We've got somebody to second that. Thank you, councillor Smith. Uh, anybody got any questions? Councillor Holden?
Well, once it's approved, well, it's actually be published on the council's website. It ha, not, yeah, the, the people we get are grateful for our time.
We'll send it to pass because after your training, your last document was outdated, so that chap will read it if this gets approved. And the information that's sent to them to the training side is prepared as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd, I'd just add that what I said before, I think it's really excellent report. And really good that we actually have some, you know, targets to hit of what, how it can be achieved, because that's what's missing on. So the only other things that come to us, well, how are you going to actually achieve this? What I do is how are you going to achieve it? So it's a really good programme together.
And another example of that, um, that, that phrase, getting stuff done, came up a lot during meetings. Um, so, okay, all those in favour? Oh, sorry, sorry, councillor Snell.
I just, I just wanted to say, based on what, um, Deb said, that I've been involved in that group and it's been a really engaging and exciting is the wrong word, but it, you know, you really feel as though we've got somewhere. And we've got things, short term things and long term things. So I'm, it's, it's been a good group to be part of.
Councillor Snell? I'm going to upgrade councillor Snell and say that it was exciting.
Exciting, that's for sure.
All those in favour?
Thank you.
Okay. Item eleven is, uh, finance committee. Can I ask councillors to ratify, uh, the following approved matters, A to F, from the councillors' finance committee from their meeting on the eighteenth of March? Uh, these are matters that have already been considered and approved by members of the finance committee. Uh, and the committee chair has requested that these matters be brought to the council for ratification. Um, I think we'll, we'll go through them, uh, one by one, I don't know. Yeah, two by one at a time. Okay, so the first one is the budgetary control statement for, uh, the period twenty ninth of February twenty twenty four. Um, can I have somebody to second that? Thank you, councillor Jackson. Uh, anybody got any questions? No, all those in favour? Thank you. Uh, the second one is the internal audit. Can I have a second of that? Councillor Jackson, thank you. Uh, any questions? All those in favour? Thank you. Uh, annual review of fees and charges. Uh, can I have a second of that? Councillor Nags, just for variety. Uh, any questions on that one? All those in favour? Uh, review of the system of internal control. I'm a second of that one, councillor Snell, thank you. Any questions? All those in favour? Thank you. Uh, item E is the policy review. We've reviewed the grant scheme, scheme of delegation and asset valuation policies. I'd second for that one. Councillor Jackson, back to you again. Uh, all those in favour? Thank you. And then finally, item F, which is the core market area. Um, just to know that the board and elbow have been charged eight hundred and sixty five pounds to be used in the core market uh, for outdoor hospitality in twenty twenty four. Uh, I'm, I believe that that is a, a small increase based on, um, yeah, it's gone from eight two five to, um, eight sixty five pence and four pounds an hour.
Good answer. But it has to be ratified tonight and the other guys as well.
So that's the last one. All those in favour? Thank you. Uh, right, okay, that brings us to item twelve. Uh, to ratify, well, can I propose that we ratify the recommendation, uh, from the planning committee for, uh, from the meeting held on Monday the fourth of March, that the planning protocol be ratified? Do we have a second there? Councillor Nags? Anybody got any questions on that? All those in favour? Okay. Uh, item thirteen, um, is informal consultation to the Eden speed limit traffic regulation order. Can I ask councillors to consider Westman and Furness Council's informal, and that word informal is very important, consultation on proposed changes to the Eden speed limit traffic regulation order for Solkeld Road and Inglewood Road? Uh, and I'll hand over to Ross, to Clark, to speak about it.
Yeah, so, um, the one for Inglewood Road, um, to extend forty miles an hour along its length from just after Bleak House down to Stoney Bed Ground about is something that the town council have requested because that road has become increasingly busy. And there have been complaints and concerns from the two equestrian businesses at each end. Um, so that, that helps with what the town council have requested in the past. And the thirty mile an hour is already being extended from, um, the entrance route to Fair Hill to above the new development in above Bleak House. On the, uh, Solkeld Road Golf Course Road, the, um, proposal is to increase the forty mile an hour to just before the turnoff for the golf club. No, to just, to just to the top of the hill through, through Windy Gap. Where the, the problems, and that again is something that the town council has to cast a standard.
Okay. So I'm going to move that one. Can I ask for a second then?
Look, I was going to call in.
You can, I'll have to move second with it.
No.
Councillor Snell, and then over to you, councillor Holden.
Okay. Um, I saw, no, the Inglewood Road, um, the forty mile an hour, proposed forty mile an hour limit. Um, the thirty mile an hour extends beyond the farm a bit, the, the length, length view.
Late house, yeah.
Yeah.
Late, late.
Um, I just wondered why we can't have the forty mile a limit starting after that junction with Zigg Green Lane? Goes through to the farms and things and the pockets of gold.
Probably because the equestrian businesses are at that Lakeview and at the other end.
Sorry, on the other end?
Uh, 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 nearer to Stoney Bed Ground about, there's one at each end.
Well, of course there is.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, I didn't know there was one in the other.
Yeah, there's, there's competition yards at both ends that use that road quite extensively. Um, and the problems started really after Lakeview for both of them. And I think they asked initially for us to lobby for it to go down to Forte. That was what they suggested. This is what's come back from Westman and Furness. And I'm sure their highways officers will have taken into account national regulations on country roads, et cetera, as well, because it's not counted as a can road. It's counted as over the countryside. So they possibly couldn't go. There'll be reasons why they're specified from that location.
Yeah, just, to, to my mind, I think it's the, the other junction on that length of road that, you know, might benefit from thirty miles an hour that's probably on there, but it's a highway to people that got their reasons.
This is just an informal consultation at this point.
Yeah.
So if members were minded to, they could send back comments to say, would it be possible to consider the extension of.
The thirty mile an hour, yeah.
Up to that.
I would, yeah, I might put that forward.
Yeah, I'd be quite agree with you. So right now, right, more hard ass.
Councillor, yeah, it's more, yeah, I think this is going to issue for future really, but if the, there's going to be more houses next to Inglewood Road, uh, they're going to be coming off, they aren't going to go, they're going to go to car. They aren't going to go down Junction and turn right on the eighty six six. More and more cars are going to be going along there.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I agree, forty mile an hour is good. How you police it, I don't know how you keep people down to that speed. Um, but it's, it's better than open road. It, and it's another road and it's muddy. It comes out of the road and stuff like that. So, okay, that's a comment for the future, rather than, but it's over there for the future.
The road, the road doesn't have proper kind of curvages, you know, it just goes straight off onto the road.
Uh, Westman and Furness may come back and say the end of the thirty mile an hour zone is because that's the end of where the development is proposed. That's the end of development sites.
On both sides of that road.
Yeah, because the, the, the land opposite Lakeview is proposed future development site. But if members wanted to ask them to consider it to that junction, that could be something that we could do if that was what you wanted. We will get a formal consultation back that will go to planning, if it hits deadlines of planning, or we'll come back to council if it hits a deadline at council.
With increasing levels of traffic and the likelihood that those cars from the new estates would want to go north along that road, does it get to a point where such a thing as a prohibition order, access only, could be put on? Because there are hundreds of cars that could be using that single lane road when it was never intended to be a major route. And it either gets to the point where it does get transformed from engine, reclassified and made double carriageway because there's that amount of traffic, or there is an access only. It's just a thought.
Any other comments? Is everyone happy to, uh? What are we actually asking?
Happy we've considered to make it from now on. We can add in the pond circuit there is.
Okay. Everyone happy with that? Okay. Uh, item fourteen, uh, is another informal consultation on, uh, a proposed introduction of an experimental traffic order in Borough Gates. Can I ask councillors to consider Westman and Furness Council's informal consultation in relation to a proposed introduction of an experimental traffic order prohibiting driving along Borough Gates between the hours of ten P M and three A M, uh, Saturday night, Sunday morning, and at times of other significant occasions. It's you, Ross.
So this is primarily due to, um, the route being used by boy racers on a Saturday night. Um, and also it's an area where you've got a nightclub that turns out at two o'clock or possibly later. I don't know, I can't remember anymore. And you've got a pub as well. Um, so it's for safety reasons that they're doing this. It does allow access to the bus station and the area next to the spa. And I understand that there is agreement that, um, people that will be going into the George Hotel can access it, so that isn't impacted. It would also allow for closure of roads for events such as May Day, where it'd norm, where it would normally be a temporary road closure that was required. I understand because the, the bit at the end, um, would normally be a, a road closure to allow people to walk, to go towards the centre.
Questions? Actually, before we begin with questions, um, I'm going to propose the motion. Can somebody second it for me? Councillor Jackson, okay. Questions? Councillor Nice?
Um, I'm just having a, a blank here in my head with the, the, the route that then run into Kyle Island that gets closed every weekend. But, yeah, wouldn't it be good if we did something like that in the town centre? Because, um, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure this measure will solve anything. All it will do, it'll put it somewhere else and it'll be annoyance elsewhere. Um, you can guarantee it. They're not going to, they're not going to give up their favourite pastime. And we're just going to take it somewhere else. And I, I understand the residents, um, the annoyance it must cause in, uh, land there. But if, if it's an issue about safety as well as noise in that area, which is, uh, uh, important to the night time economy, I think it, it would be sensible to look at it more broadly.
Anyone else? Councillor Holden?
Yeah, I, I agree with councillor Nice. I think it's just going to send the problem somewhere else. Um, although, yes, there is night to learn. It will be showing up to the nights and things. I don't know. But it's all by the empty port, so, um, it's not a good residential, uh, being the same problem with the noise and everything else in the same day. So I'm not sure about this new, you know, that particular bit of road being permanently closed, um, late Saturday night, early Sunday morning. Um, I'm also, uh, I don't know. So I'm not, not keen on that, but if it goes somewhere else, where will it go? And how will it be enforced? I don't know, but at least they're up every Saturday night.
What they are already.
They're all ready and they're not managing to stop the boy races. They're not managing to stop the boy races then. That is a question.
The, the morate, the police presence around there is morated and under behaviour. And they're not necessarily equipped to be following boy races. There were vehicles there, but they were out of them. They're, they're on the streets, shepherding, probably.
I mean, it's not a, a great distance from the police station anyway, is it? So, you know, presumably, I don't, I just wonder how it is going to be enforced. We're obviously going to bar it like they have in Carlisle and, and I think that would, to my mind, that would give a very good message to the parents, you know, we've got to cordon off the road and so no go area or whatever. So I don't like the idea of that. So.
I have to, I have to imagine that the, the words informal, proposed and experimental suggest that the people that are looking at it probably haven't quite got it all figured out yet. So, but, uh, yeah, okay. Councillor Jason, I mean, councillor Jackson?
Sure.
What is it? The, the dear leader said, Councillor Jason, yes.
Um, I, I was just going to say that, um, we used to live along Drovers Lane, you were, perhaps something. And actually, every single night, there are boy racers right along that road. So it's quite interesting that, um, that, um, Westman and Furness Council have just suggested.
there are boy racers right along that road, so it's quite interesting that Westmoreland Furness council have just suggested shutting off Borough Gate, that, that little road, I mean, that, we should be looking at our bigger road.
I think it might be more to do with conflict with pedestrians, it might be complicated.
Right. Because you've got, there's nightclub that's there at that time, and not two pubs, or one. You get a lot of people in that area for that time, right?
Councillor Jackson.
I think the operative word here is experimental, a suggestion has come to mind. And they want to see the words, and, and that will, you know, bring information that they can act upon to see what might work elsewhere. I couldn't find the processes, you see what might be developable, developable, is such a word, but you know, I don't know. Let somebody tell us that.
Everybody happy? Sure, happy.
It's been a dark, a bit more broadly, yeah, because we have problems from other certain areas, and I would have been forced.
Okay, so item fifteen, then, the A sixty six North Trans Pennine Project. Can I ask councillors just to note the letter received from National Highways confirming that the second tier of state transport is approved, the development consent order for the A sixty six North Trans Pennine Project? Will all have to note that?
Yes.
Okay. Item sixteen is a, just an update on FOI requests, which is an item of sub-concern. I have no two ears to present that one.
Um, I don't think I've got anything further to add to that, any questions?
Just, I assume we've all had a look at it, there's a huge uptick in the number of requests. And, well, we're just looking at mine at the moment, but it could become an item of concern or something. Councillor, sorry, councillor Jason.
Although we noticed an update, I, I think it's important to say to residents that we're absolutely in favour of, of transparency. If people do have genuine FOI requests, please do, obviously, if you're legal, right, but also don't feel like this, with any intention on us to dissuade people. I want people to feel like they can ask any question of the council. And, 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 you know, ask your councillors as well, doesn't necessarily need to be an FOI. We can't keep any secrets, you know, we're happy to discuss anything.
Thank you. Councillor Snell.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to say, is I think that we need to get the message out there, that we are open to discussing things that are, are issues that are raised. And freedom of information just ties so many people, requests just ties so many people up, officers and members. And, you know, we can answer questions, it's really just supporting all your sayings.
Councillor Snell.
And I think it needs emphasisation as well, because I've seen the comments on social media that the last item on the agenda today is a confidential item. And the reason now is not to do any secret behind the door deals from the public, it's because the deal with data protection issues that by law have to be protected, such as people's personal circumstances, people's personal details, health records, that kind of thing. And as far as I remember, I can, I can't remember one discussion that was on pink papers, the confidential ones, that wasn't available, it was very, very confidential data protection issues. I think people need to understand that as well, or we need to convey that, because when you, when you do see a pink paper, you think, well, what other discussion we had for us? But we never explain the good reasons for it and the legal reasons for it.
So everybody happy to note that report? Okay, so then item seventeen is our next meeting. The next meeting with the council is the annual town meeting, which is scheduled for Monday the twenty second of April twenty twenty four at six PM here. Open to all residents of Tenerife.
Um, is it appropriate to, at this meeting, to send condolences to councillor Bowen and their family and her family? Um, I think all, all the councillors would, would want to say how sad we are. And also marking the work that the previous councillor Bowen did. And to give support.
But, yeah, that, that probably wouldn't be a town council without Brian Bowen. The original three district councillors who went around getting signatures to petition for this body to exist. We all know it.
You're on two levels as a councillor, as a human being.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so then we're into part two for the one item.